Okay, I assume that's working. Just to remind everyone that we're being recorded. You can turn your cellphones down. And we will proceed.
So, Abington zoning Board of Appeals, October 11th hearing. First thing on the agenda is old and new business. Mr. Chairman, I recommend that since we're still waiting for a member, we shelve that towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Any objections?
No.
All right. So, second thing on the docket is the vote on reviewing of the engineering for the proposed 1015 Plymouth Street 40B project.
And we did get a letter from, you know, town lawyer today. Do you want to read it? It's perfectly fine if you want.
Yeah, if you want, I'll...
Well, I just think that we should read at least the front of it. I'll do it.
Okay.
All right, so it's what, what did we say it was, Tetra?
Tetra Tech.
Tetra Tech. All right. It's for the Abington Senior Housing, 1015 Plymouth Street, Abington, Mass. Dear Chairman, we are pleased to submit this proposal to the Town of Abington ZBA for professional engineer services associated with the above referenced project. The object is serviced to assist the ZBA in review responsibilities and provide through an information review for the purpose design and the potential project impact. Each task identified below targets various areas where the ZBA may require technical assistance and provide any estimate budget and technical reviews, material of exec submitted by applicant, work for the each task is district for tasks, ZBA's, and on and on required, involved. We are extremely well suited for, to assist the ZBA in the efforts since we are located in Marlboro. Office staff include a wide range of engineers, designers, scientists, and planners potentially needed to cover various areas where technical support may be needed. All review of the work will be performed under the direct guidance of senior Tetra Tech staff and experience needed between substance and minor quick issues. We, we will force, focus our intent review efforts into identifying and resolving these critical issues that may require changes, impact, or other design. In addition, we will be responsible for presentation of all of our review findings at a public meeting. My experience in public meetings and technical demand for full ranges of issues provide the ZBA with resources capable, comfortable handling of what large challenges public forums. All right, format. We're not going to go into all the prices and everything, but the bottom line is this is what our town lawyer has recommended, and this would be paid by the applicant.
Correct.
Okay. So, and the thing, the thing is that basically we want to make sure, you know, she's brought this for, before us. This is the only people that she brought before us, so...
The only ones who reply to RFP for that. So, do we want, I think we make a motion at this point to vote on accepting Tetra Tech's proposal, correct?
Yeah.
Anyone want to make a motion regarding that?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal outlined in the letter of October 1st, 2018 by Tetra Tech.
I will second that.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
Okay. First thing, let's see.
Do you want to get through the minutes or do you want to hear the petition?
The problem about the minutes is that Andrew's not here, and he was on the minutes, and he can't vote.
All right.
Yeah, so we'll just skip over that till the next meeting.
We'll just do that. So, if the first petitioner is ready, the Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Giardino's 497 Bedford Street, Abington, for a special permit to install an electronic sign at 497 Bedford Street under 17558 dot two, section I, property located on assessors map 39, lot 22, in the highway commercial zone.
Yes.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi.
It was brought up in the last meeting, and we, we just continued it.
It was the last meeting, I'm sorry.
Marshall, do you want to say a few things on this one? Because we've got something remaining today, right?
Yes.
Or the other day?
They've requested a special permit for the, for the electronic sign, and they have, I, do you intend to add this to the existing?
Yes, the existing.
Well, and they have, you have a sign on the building now, cloud on the building, and then you have a pole sign, and this is a third sign. And there is no relief requested for the third sign. So, I spoke with counsel with regards to this, and just got an answer today. And they applied in April under the old sign by law, and it's now applying for a special permit for the digital sign. The digital sign would be a third sign. So, this would lead us potentially to the waiver, which is a new power, authority that has been granted this board. And for the third sign or the expansion of the freestanding sign, which would be over there, allowed 32 square feet per 17558 point two A. So, counsel has said that a waiver is necessary per 17553 point three, uh, 58 point three. If it's determined that the waiver is required, which I think it is, legal notice provided does not indicate a waiver as sought. However, the board must be satisfied that the substance of what is sought was clearly the nature of what was relief as sought was indicated in the advertisement. And if the board is satisfied, reclassifying of the relief sought within, is within your board's authority, as interested parties had notice of the substance of what was wanted. If the waiver for the third sign or an expanded freestanding sign, that relief does not appear to be noted in the legal notice. Legal notice only seeks a special permit, no indication of that sign being a third sign or expansion of a freestanding sign. So, the granting of the relief would be subject to challenge, potentially, any aggrieved party could assert notice was not sufficient. So, but if the board determines, and they have the authority, the substance of what was sought is advertised, the board could go forward and notifying the applicant that the applicant could be, could be at risk of a challenge, and if there wasn't sufficient And it could be, it could be an issue. If they want to go forward with that, they could, or the applicant could choose to amend the application, pay the costs, re-advertise, and do it again. So, that's in essence what counsel has said and why. You have the power to do this if you choose to, if you feel that adequate notice is given to the abutters, and she's willing, or the applicant's willing to take the potential risk, waiver can be done, and that's kind of what this 150, 17558 three waiver was intended to do, sort of, not really with regards to the advertising. It was more intended, in my opinion, to deal with situations that it isn't specific with regards to variance, special permit, relief. It grants you, it doesn't set a precedent, it's just something you're allowed to do in this case law that supports it.
Okay, so basically, when you put it in the advertisement and you fill out the paperwork, it should have been, again, what'd you say, Marshall?
Pardon?
What, what was it that was advertised as?
Well, they were advertising a special permit, which is for an electronic sign. They neglected to check off waiver for an expanded, larger pole sign exceeding the 32 square feet, or saying, yeah, they're requesting a third sign. You could consider it one as a pole sign that combines the two. It's larger than the allowed upon 32 square feet for a pole sign, but you can grant a waiver, allowing them to do that if you chose to do so.
So, are you willing to take that chance? That's the question we have, I mean...
That's the question now. I don't know, maybe there's a whole field of people out here that are angry and want to speak, like, guys, come on.
Let me take a look.
Well, let me...
Well, we're not going on the floor anyway, so...
May I ask you a question first? To Nancy, this that I read at the beginning of this hearing is, is the advertisement that went in to the newspapers and to the abutters, correct? So, this is, this is it. So, from what I read from counsel, right, the first thing that they're asking us to determine, the first hurdle, is are the words in this case, the petition of Giardino's 497 Bedford Street, Abington, for a special permit to install an electronic sign at 497 Bedford Street? Is that, I think we have to ask, is that sufficient notice?
Correct.
Now, the other issue is, Marshall, do we have an idea as to how many square feet the sign would be with the addition of this? What's that, 27 square feet? Well, there you go, that's 27, the total is 32.
The original sign is what is allowed, and the box sign here, I didn't look at that, but I am looking...
It's three feet.
Three by eight.
Three by eight.
So, it's 24 feet.
Mr. Matt over here.
Yeah, so, yeah, fif, oh, bad, 56, huh, versus the allowed upon 32, if you want to consider it one pole sign.
Counsel is asking us basically, I think, check, paragraph two says, if the ZBA determines that a waiver is necessary, right, then the section notice of public hearing shall be given, and so we have to determine if, right, that's our, our thing?
Yes, it is.
Is, is the words install of an electronic sign at 497 Bedford Street, is that clear enough to the abutters? And would, would there be different wording? Well, there would be different wording for...
There would be.
...a third sign or a sign in excess of 32 square feet.
It would say, exactly.
Okay. So, I think that's the first thing we as a board need to determine, all right? Because if the answer's not enough advertisement was given, and we don't think we should proceed with the waiver, then it's up to the petitioner to say, I want to risk it anyways. And the appeal period would only be 30 days, correct, Marshall?
Yes.
The appeal period is not beyond that, there's no special circumstances beyond that.
A special permit would be issued, and it sits for 21 days.
Okay. You probably don't sit on too many of these hearings.
No.
You're lucky.
Lucky you.
So, the sign we propose, it's got to be, the maximum we can have it, 32 square feet?
Correct.
And then I'm talking about 24?
Without permission, yeah.
I'm asking for an extra 24?
Correct. Correct. So, you're, according to Marshall, about 56 square feet on that sign right now. So, what do you think?
Well, do we know that it's the third, a third sign? Is it a third sign?
Yeah.
In my opinion, in my opinion, it is.
That's the first, that's the first question.
That's the question. So, is it the third sign? The petitioner knows that? Is this the third sign?
We don't, we don't do it as a third sign, because it's got to be at the same place.
How, how many signs have you got first?
Two, two, we have two.
One on the building and...
One at the building, one at the street.
Freestanding.
But if it touches, does that make it one larger? I'm just asking.
So, you're not replacing, so you're not, right, you're not replacing the sign, you're putting another sign.
You're adding an electronic...
It's going to be the one at the front of the high school, sign and electronic under.
So, one, two, three, so that would be the third sign.
Yep.
Right? If, if we presume that is it. And then the second thing, if that's so, then it suggests here that you need a waiver, and the advertisement should be waiver. But I would ask, I'm looking here at the application for zoning, which the petitioner would have had to do, actually, we don't know your name, what's your name?
Yanya.
Yanya?
Yes.
Miss Yanya did. And I'm looking at it, and I'm seeing a variance, and I'm seeing a special permit, which Miss Yanya ticked off, I'm seeing a finding, but I don't see anywhere where she writes waiver, ticks off waiver, do you?
Where the applicant has checked off, or whether it's on the form?
Well, it's on the form. Where, where is, where is it on the form for the petition? The applicant has signed off on it.
It is up there.
I think it's on there above.
It was added, it looks like it was typed in.
It's got scratched off.
I'll take it back, because I was going to argue that, you know, we should, we should duck that. Well...
That was a good shot.
I know, it was a good shot. I'm a defense counsel, so I... Okay, so I didn't see that, because I'm not wearing my glasses. All right, so there is a waiver, I see it's typed in.
It's something new.
Typed into the form.
It's kind of scratched out, isn't it?
Yeah, okay.
It also seems to me that waiver is a lower standard than a special permit or a variance.
Well, I think that, I think that's, I'm not sure you had a question, I mean, I think that's the issue, though. Another issue actually is, I think you need both. You're going to need the waiver for the third sign, and then you're going to need the special permit for the digi, no, for the digital electronic sign, because that's a, that's a total separate section. So, I think if you're going to go forward, I think you're going to have to consider both, and if you approve it, I think you're going to have to approve both in order for it to be okay.
And, and actually, I think she did tick off waiver, too. She ticked off waiver and special permit.
Circles.
Right. So, okay, so I was going to say that, you know, how would you know? But now I'm looking at the sign, the notice that we gave for the public hearing, and it's all, this is a public meeting, it's all about, do people get notice? And it says for a special permit, so we think it's a special permit and waiver, or special permit or waiver?
I think you need both.
To install an electronic sign on 497 Bedford Street. So, I mean, it does have the section of the law. Is, is that the sign law, the 58? So, it has the 58, it has the sign law, and I tell anybody who looks at the notice, any neighbor, Mr. Sione across the way, or...
Has an electronic sign on it.
Yeah.
Right.
Does he? And, you know, the town manager down the street, Mr. Schaefer, the school administrator, when he's looking, as he must, at all these notices, he's going to know that Giardino's wants to put an electronic sign, right? I think from that, that's a reasonable interpretation. So, I think that they've given adequate notice to the abutters. So, I'm going with you.
I tend to agree with you on that.
Yeah, so I'm going with you. And the attorney, like you said, has said that we can reclassify, as long as we're content that the nature of the relief has been described to everybody, we can reclassify it under a case called Toto versus Zoning Board of Appeals versus Webster, 1999. And the only thing is, that it's a choice ultimately is the applicant's, because, right, if, if you go with, with whatever decision we make, and say we make a decision to approve it, somebody could actually say not adequate notice was given, and they could, so the other way of dealing with it is holding off again...
She would have to withdraw and refile completely.
Refile.
Special?
Yeah.
So, you can see, there's, there's holes in, in this, there's holes in this.
Potentially one other option, if you, she was granted the electronic sign, she would be able to use that if she wanted to make sure, and then not use the pole sign that exists right now, put the cover, put the, put the electronic device up, use that, and then be able to wait to approve, approve or approval for the third sign, which is...
With a waiver?
The one that exists. So, she could, you know, that would, if it was more important to the applicant to have the electronic sign, that's the third option. So, refile, leave it the way it is, go forward to the electronic, and then take the, cover the GR, the existing pole sign, or take the risk that there would be an aggrieved party that would complain there wasn't sufficient notice.
But again, you're asking for a special permit on the notice.
Right.
Do you need the special permit for the electronic sign?
I need the special permit.
Okay. And what would have to, what would, what would the waiver be for then?
The third sign.
The third sign would be the one that's covered up. So, you, you know, it's...
See, I'll talk to the gentleman, we'll decide what to do with her. We'll probably file for spare, for the third anyways, and then maybe we'll see if we keep and wait to the decision for the third, or if we switch it, that to electronic and...
My only question is on time.
Right.
The first applicant, and then they, they missed the first meeting, and here's the second meeting. Where are we on time on this?
Now that we've had, we've opened it, it's okay.
Because basically, the question would be, that we maybe want to continue it again? Is that what we're saying here? Or are we going to vote on?
I don't think you want to continue it, because she, I think it's going to be up to her to make the decision. Do you want us to go forward tonight with the chance that if it gets approved, somebody will appeal that within 21 days? If nobody appeals it within that 21-day period, then there's no issue. If somebody does appeal it, then, you know, potentially...
So, you want to go forward, okay. All right. Do we feel comfortable as a board going forward here? We, like, Amy's...
Well, Andy, what was your, like, I think, you know, I agree that sufficient notice was given.
Right, so, yeah. So, I think, as counsel says, if the board were to determine you're comfortable that sufficient notice was given, then the board explained to go forward, classify, but, so we have to reclassify and say we're going to hear both for a special permit and a waiver. But you have to understand that if we do go forward, you have a risk that somebody could appeal.
And it's got to be...
I think that should be made part of the record, just so.
Basically, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then you have the hearing on both the special permit and the waiver. Special permit for the digital sign and the waiver, because it's a third, for the third, because it's a third, so it's, it's the same sign, Rich?
Yeah.
It's the digital sign, it's the same, but there's a three, it makes it a third sign and a digital...
It's still a third, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
And is it square footage as well, Marshall? I mean, sight everything in the world.
Yeah, it's a combination of, you're combining, really, the pole sign as being married with the electronic sign.
Right.
It's kind of unique, to some extent, the way they're talking about putting it together, and size as well. Yeah, you're granting a waiver for the existing proposal, which is unique.
But it's limited, Marshall, right, it's limited to that proposal. You can't go beyond that, you can't go beyond that square footage, it's limited to what that is.
Yep.
That's it, there's nothing more that can be done with it.
Yeah.
It's a unique situation, and that lends itself to what the waiver was intended and put in the bylaw for, in my opinion.
Okay, so, we, we, does the board feel comfortable going forward, and you feel comfortable going forward, too?
Yes.
Okay. Can I open up to the floor now, and just see if there's someone here? Okay. I'm opening up the floor. Anybody here for the petition? Okay, closing.
Pardon, against, okay.
Closing the floor. Okay, so, any more questions on this?
Well, I guess, I just, we haven't heard a lot of Yanya's case.
Right.
Yes, we want you to kind of explain why you want the sign, that sort of thing.
Yes.
And then we need to kind of remind you of what the sign can and can't do if it's to be approved. Please go ahead.
Yeah. We want to have electronic sign to advertise promotions, like a free, free third pizza we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we invite sugar, the third free. It's, it's, it's all lunch specials, dinner specials, the live music that we got to have starting this weekend, so that, that's just advertisement of promotions and the rest. That's the proposal of the sign, the electronic sign.
Part of the board's concern has always been with electronic signs, is we don't want them having to resemble Las Vegas, so, you know, the message can't change more than, is it 90 seconds?
60 seconds. Unless you, unless you make it longer, you have, you can make it longer. 60 seconds is...
You know, you know, and the idea is that if someone's sitting at the traffic light, they're not being distracted by three or four messages. It has to be auto dimming, so on a, on a, you know, day like today, it's not super bright. Oh, thank you.
Those are the standards for the, for the digital sign. Those are the nuances?
Yeah.
So, they can't, the messages cannot change less than once every 60 seconds. There's no animation allowed, there's no scrolling, fading, or movement of any time kind, no chasing borders or anything like that, and no live video or sound, and again, has to be auto dimming to external ambient light conditions.
Yep.
So, those are kind of the, otherwise you get a call from him and his staff.
Will I make a copy of this?
If you want.
Can I make a copy of this for you, just in case?
Different thing, we're going to go over, getting these up to you, some issues.
Yeah.
We'll talk later.
Yeah.
Thank you, I was looking for that, Andy, thank you.
I know, it's...
It's in here somewhere.
It's new, so you might not have it yet.
Right. Just hold on one second.
One second.
We're going to vote for it.
Now, we just need to...
Yeah, we need to come back. Andy, he's going to, he's going to vote on this one, and...
Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, we'll talk, we'll talk more about the one at the...
Okay.
Oh, just for the record, this has no impact on the storage. I know. But he, but he always gets up.
There goes all Emmy.
That, that makes bad TV, you up and leaving us alone.
I'm afraid I couldn't.
Keep it up, we're going to put a copying machine right next to you.
So, maybe we could send a copy to her. Maybe we could send a copy...
That's a good idea, that's a good idea, actually. It'll be something different, but...
Andy's all the things, so if it is approved, maybe we could send a copy to her. I just couldn't find out what size paper it is.
All right, so, stay at the table. Okay.
So, do we want to make a mo, a motion on this?
Well, I think that we have to make four, our motion has to be four parts, right? First, we have to decide whether there is a waiver, is, a waiver is required because it's a third sign. We believe that, we don't have to make that as a motion, right? But we believe that. That would be found in Nancy's stand, that a waiver is required because it is a third sign.
Okay.
The second thing is that we, because of notice, adequate notice, in our belief, was given, and so we want to reclassify the notice to include waiver and special permit, right?
Correct.
And so that would be the second thing, Nancy. And the third thing would be that the size of the sign that we require, so what size sign do we require? Are we accepting her size?
It's already up there, and it's not being taken down, or, or, only thing, it could be added on to the bottom.
32 are regular, and 24 are added, electronic.
And we're happy with that.
Yeah.
We're happy with that. So, it's the size sign. And then the fourth and last, and then is...
So, what, what does that make?
So, the, we're accepting the size of the sign that she wants to include, and that includes the old sign and this new digital sign. We're accepting that. And that, Nancy, is, that's what they need a special permit for.
You're, yeah, you're approving a third sign.
So, that actually needs a motion. That needs a motion.
I think, I think all three, with what you've said so far, I think you should do motions on it, in my opinion.
Oh, okay, all right. And the fourth thing is...
We're going over it quick.
Yeah.
Allow, okay, well then, and the fourth then is to allow the digital sign. So maybe I'll start with, I, I motion that a waiver is required because this is the third sign. It's only second.
I'll second that.
You should read the whole thing out, and then, and then we go into it, right?
Yeah, if you can perhaps incorporate it all, is that, you know...
So, so I make a motion that, one, a waiver is required since this is the...
No, no, I mean, you have to read the, the announcement.
Oh, yes, but...
He's gay, man.
Okay.
But we have to make, we have to motion, we have to make a decision, that's the final decision. But we have to first make a decision that a waiver is required, right?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that right?
I think that's what she says.
So I think we should break it up.
If the ZVA determines that a waiver is necessary, it's determination, I would say, you would make a vote.
So let me break it up, because it's just too confusing.
Sorry.
So how about I make a motion that a waiver is required because it's the third sign?
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Secondly, I make a motion to reclassify under the, the DUTEAU precedent, the notice to include waiver and special permit for this sign.
Based on sufficient notice being given?
Based on sufficient notice being given, the usual notice of public hearing.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
And then, thirdly, I make a motion for, to approve a special permit for the size signs of the...
Digital, the special permit is for the...
For the digital...
The digital electronics.
For the electronic sign, 487, maybe that actually, Andy, maybe that is the sin that I read here. So I make a motion that the Town of Abington, zoning board of appeals will, Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals approves a special permit for an electronic sign at 497 Bedford Street under the sign law 175-58-2I.
I will second that.
All favor?
Aye.
And that's it.
Then you have the waiver.
Oh, do we not do that?
We have to waiver.
Waiver, so, so she has a third sign.
I make a motion...
But just, can I just...
Go ahead, read it.
Because there, there is a standard that was adopted as part of what you need to prove as far as a waiver goes. So the zoning board of appeals may grant a waiver by a majority vote, it doesn't have to be three, it's by majority vote, if the applicant sufficiently demonstrates to the board that, A, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this signed by law would involve hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of this signed by law, and, B, that at least one of the following conditions exists: the proposed signage is designed to be harmonious with and not harmful, injurious, or objectionable to existing or future uses in the area, and, two, the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of the actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of this signed by law. So you have to have A and one of those second that are under B. So literal enforcement would involve hardship, financial, or otherwise, to the applicant, and that the proposed, I would, I would imagine that the proposed signage is harmonious with and not harmful to the, the area, so.
Okay.
You do have to prove some sort of hardship.
Absolutely.
Okay, do we all agree with, with...
You guys can take that, that's right there.
Two of them should be listed in there.
Two of them should be listed in there.
So I make a motion to approve a waiver for...
For a third sign.
For a third sign, where a literal, A, a literal enforcement would involve hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant, and B, that the proposed signage is harmonious and not harmful, injurious, or objectionable to existing or future uses in the area.
I'll second that.
Give that to him.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
It's a new bylaw, and we're, we're just getting, you know, all straightened out here. Again, we don't want to look like Vegas, that's the whole, the whole point of it, but we appreciate your business in town.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
So Nancy has a letter for you?
It took longer than it should have.
Yeah.
So you get your advice here.
Thank you.
Step down.
Okay, um, who the next?
Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 11, 2018, at 7:5 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwood, S.A., Abington, on the petition of Bruce Davidson, that's G, 166 Bedford Street, New York Trust, 312 East Otterton Street, Tennessee, for a special permit request, Section 175, 21A, 1A, and 166 Bedford Street, problems located in S. Math, 23 Lot 19, in TC Zone.
Okay, so the storage department has, no bearing, there's no bearing on it? Probably works. All right. Okay, how you doing?
Very good, thanks, how are you?
Good.
Good. Shall I wait for Mr. Nagra?
No, he's stepping on, he's in the butter, so he's just going to step on on this.
Okay, he's kind of, I'm saying, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. My name is Ronald Whitney, I've been with the board, you have seen me before. I'm here with Bruce Davidson. Bruce is from Hanson, he is an HVAC technician, does a lot of work in new houses as well as existing homes, refurbishing air conditioning units, heating units, and so on and so forth. Been in business for many years, he's accompanied by his wife Kathy, who is sitting back here behind us. Back about a year ago, I think it was about a year ago, Bruce had occasion to discuss with George Mallett, who is a customer of his, the purchase of the property at 166 Bedford Street. And so Bruce thought it would be a great place to run his business out of, and so George Mallett owns Hawkeye Fence, and he built that little plaza right next door to this property, and he owns that and rents it out, and so on and so forth, but he decided, Bruce expressed an interest, he decided that he would sell it to Bruce, and so he's done that. The structure that's there, and a lot of you who've been in town for a while might recognize it, is farmer hunts property, what we finally knew from years ago, have been in town for years and years, and so farmer hunts property, part of it is where the little plaza is right now, and the house, as I understand it, is this building, which was reconstructed by George Mallett. And he did so pursuant to a permit, which I have here, which indicates that it was a duplex and a rehab. And if we look at the bylaws, the table of uses, 175, Section 21, A8, it appears that George did that by right, because it suggests in a transition, I should say, this is in a transitional commercial district, it appears that the conversion of an existing dwelling to accommodate not more than three families, provided that the exterior design does not change from the character of a single-family unit, and provided that each dwelling unit complies with 175-28. So it appears that George went forward with the idea that he'd make a duplex building out of the two residential units, and at some point in time, he and Bruce hooked up, Bruce said, geez, I'd love to buy that, but give me an opportunity to run my HVAC business out of the bottom floor of the property, and so that's what he would want to do. Now, there's another provision of the bylaw, and that is Section 175, 21, Section A1, which says that accessory apartments would be allowed by special permit in a residential district, in the transitional commercial district. And so that's what we have before you, is a request for a special permit. What Bruce would like to do is, um, the first floor is about 1,700 square feet, he'd like to run his small HVAC business out of that. About 1,100 feet would be shop space, and 600 feet would be office space. And then upstairs, there's additional 700, 1,700 square feet, because it's the same footprint. And what he'd like to do is put two apartments, one two-bedroom apartment and one one-bedroom apartment upstairs. And so at some point in time after he purchased the property, he went in to see your building inspector, Mr. Adams, and Mr. Adams felt that it would be best, given that it's kind of a mixed use, that he come before the board to get the board's input and make sure that everything was in accordance with your zoning bylaws. So Bruce's use of the property as a proposed shop, if you will, an office for his business, does appear to be allowed under G of 175, 21, G4, where it says plumbing, electrical, or carpentry shop or other similar service or repair establishment is allowed in the transitional commercial district. So we really do have a property that's transitional commercial. If I look at the bylaws, the transitional commercial district is meant to retain the character of residential district while at the same time allowing it for some transition into commercial. On one side of the property, Steve Goslin has built what appears from the outside to be like an eight-unit residential property, and on the other side is George Mallett's small commercial plaza. So this property in between those two properties is proposed to be kind of a little bit of a mix of both, so it would be two residential, small residential units upstairs and the shop downstairs. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have with respect to the proposal.
Just a few things, just to start off, is that highway commercial now? That section?
Oh, I understood to be transitional.
In, in 716, there's a permit to rehab a single family into duplex, zone TC allowed, single family actually allowed you, I think you make it into three units, actually, but zoning change, splitting that road, and it made your side of the street HC and left TC on the other side in June 6 of 2016. So it's now HC.
Oh.
Back when Mallett had it, 10-foot side yard was allowed. No C of O was ever issued on the building, I don't know why he stopped, he let the permit It's the existing unfinished structure. I guess it's a duplex, I don't really know, in HC. It's, the single family was never raised, never torn down, and so that wouldn't need a C of O, it would just need to be finished. Now comes an application for an accessory apartment to a single family in HC or a couple of single families. And now I'm hearing we're talking about mixed use, requires sprinkler, et cetera.
You would agree to comply with...
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting they wouldn't do that, but in this district, I know there's a drainage issue in the rear that George had promised to take care of, that I don't believe has been taken care of.
That doesn't seem to be...
But that would be, have to be engineered, and...
I believe that's been engineered.
Okay, I mean, I'm just bringing up some things in here, and now with, it's not a single family, and actually having, you're probably having those apartments in there in HC, I think that's probably allowed, and I think a, having the, where G4 plumbing electrical in TC was allowed, it's allowed in HC as well. It's pre-existing non-conforming in terms of dimensional density, use, coverage, driveways, proximity, more than, closer than three feet to the lot line, it's, the lot is undersized, it requires 20,000 now, maximum 40% coverage in the front yard setback, that succeeded. It all, I think, exists, it's all grandfathered. In terms of parking, well, I guess we'd have, you've got a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and I don't know, you've got that business there, so you know, I thought it was going to be a, a single family, I think, allows for accessory apartments. I don't know that just having accessory apartments to a commercial space, I don't know about that, I couldn't speak for that, to be honest with you. I didn't realize it was going to be a...
Excuse?
A mixed, I thought it was going to be a single, it was a single family. And now, when, it's not going to be a single family anymore from what I hear.
Yeah.
It's going to be two, a one-bedroom apartment, a two-bedroom apartment, and then commercial space on the first floor that it used for its HVAC twice.
This state specifically has permission to build a duplex and rehab property, so that was his intention at that time.
But not to run a business out of it?
No.
No?
No.
And mixed use, run the business out of it. I'd have to run that by counsel to be perfectly...
Right, and in this, this, this plan, too, I mean, we had some questions about that, about the parking and stuff, I mean...
Well, yeah.
I mean...
How much parking is required, whether that's...
Commercial vehicles, a lot of stuff.
There's our space.
I'm not suggesting it's a bad idea, I just don't...
Yeah, we just want to get everything, you know, correct here.
I don't know whether it's allowed, but I would advise the board that we'd need a clearer proposal of what would be, what's being asked for, and I'm going to have to give this to counsel to, would be what I would recommend.
Yeah, because even in the application, it says zone district TC, and then, then up here, when you, special permit requested, Section 175, 21...
Well, 175, 21 is everything here. It's 175, 21, I think it's 1...
1A2, 1A?
1A.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But, and the district is, I'm pretty, we have the zoning map, I looked at it because I, it was very odd, the way they split that right down...
Yeah, right down the middle.
And I think that you need to...
Yeah, I didn't pick that up when I looked at the zoning map.
Yeah, the, well, I don't know which, the most common map, I think, I have it in my book, it shows that it is split, but I have a large one in obviously my office, but...
So it sounds like we need to do more work on this before...
Yeah, I just would point out to the board that the uses that are proposed under, if you look under 175, 21, the same sections that I just quoted, G4, in a highway commercial...
Many of the things are allowed, that you can go propose it, if you look at, this is the most, very difficult to read.
Yep.
But this is the proposed zoning map, this is the area here, and, and the light is the TC, HC is this yellow, this darker pink, I guess.
See, when I looked at it, I see pink on both sides.
It looks, it looks the same, well, it's the difference between this and this, and there isn't a lot of differentiation, which is why I think you misread it.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, a lot of questions, I mean, now it's a mixed use, you were asking for a special permit, in the parking, I mean, everything in front of us is kind of changed.
Just to point out, the parking on the plan that you had before you, that we see with the application, if you look at the bylaw, the required parking is 4.5 spaces, we provided seven spaces, and in addition, we provided an eighth space you'll see in the back right, back left-hand corner, which is...
For a commercial?
For a commercial vehicle, yeah.
It's not retail or anything?
No, it's not retail, it's a... It's a, it's a very low traffic generator. What would happen here is that Mr. Davidson and his crew might go into the shop in the morning, load up the materials they need for the job of the day, take off and be gone for the day. There might be a secretary there doing billing and taking care of various aspects of the front office of the, again, it's a small business. So it would be a very low traffic generator, for sure.
How many square feet is the business?
Seventeen hundred feet on each floor, Marshall.
No, just of the business?
The business would be seventeen hundred, and then the two apartments upstairs are provided seventeen hundred.
General business, commercial, personal services, service establishments. It's not retail trade, including stores, variety stores, but that's, that's as, pretty much as close as I think we'd get to the use as a general business.
Yeah.
Commercial or personal, I don't know. That's, calls for three hundred, well, a space for every three hundred square feet of gross floor area. So that's five plus, maybe six spaces, something like that. Five point six.
Well, I think that we have...
Five point six.
What about the workers? I mean, they come to the site?
And then one point eight for the one-bedroom, and then two point five for the two-bedroom.
How much for the commercial?
Six point, five point six.
Five point six, thanks.
Well, I've relied on the engineer in calculating. If you see the zoning requirements in the block on the plan, he's got it down as warehouse space, which is the way we would characterize it. And so your, your bylaws appear to...
Then you're looking at, if you consider warehouse and storage, but it's a business. If it's warehouse and storage, per the plan that you provide, they can make a decision as to which it is.
Yeah.
Because there's a huge difference in terms of one, you know, if it's warehouse, it's one space for every four thousand square feet of gross floor area. And then you can say you need one space. One space for each four hundred square feet of office area. You know, that's talking about a storage building.
Yeah, well, that's essentially what it will be.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
It's essentially what it will be. We don't anticipate Bruce to speak up if a mistake in the case, but we don't anticipate that there will be customer traffic.
Yeah, I mean, is this too many questions to be asked here? I think, I think it needs to be looked over more by council. And again, you're asking for a different zone. And special permit, you may need more. You may need, I'd rather have the council look at it and see if we need more or less. Special, do we need any variances here? I mean...
Well, again, I would just point out to the board, if we look at the table of use regulations, what is proposed is a, two accessory apartments and a plumbing, electrical, carpentry, in this case HVAC business. I think they all can kind of, just common sense would say that they're all in that same category. So it says shop or other similar service or repair establishment, that's G four. And it says in the highway commercial zone, that's an allowed use. And then if you look at accessory apartments on the first page, in one seventy-five twenty-one A one, it says that highway commercial, the accessory apartments would require a special permit. So I think with, even though I characterized the zoning district incorrectly, I don't think that that's really that significant, if you will, only because it's the exact same zoning provision.
Okay, but now it's a mixed use too.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's why we're here. That's why we're here, because it is a mixed use admittedly.
But you weren't asking for a mixed use, were you?
Well, I was asking for accessory apartments.
Right. Were they asking for mixed use?
No. They were asking for two accessory apartments to what I thought was originally a sing, it was a single family and then there was an apartment. It was a duplex.
I think that's the issue on, I think.
Yep.
Originally, it's not clear what is being asked. We're asking for two apartments, but there's no mention of commercial use.
I mean, it's a whole different ballgame here. I think that's what I'm, how I'm looking at it. I don't know how you guys are looking at it. I think we need to...
Yeah.
Get more information. From the parking to dumpsters to...
Well, parking would be, you know, they would go, probably be going to planning with regards to, you know, where we've got commercial business.
But I don't think this is just a simple...
No. It's the layout, snow storage, parking, vans, et cetera. That's up my call, elements of the environment, et cetera. But in terms of the mixed use that's being applied for...
Not applied for, what do you mean?
Or not applied, it's being, now being presented where it's not presented here.
Is, can I ask a question? Is the building being used for anything at this point in time?
No.
No, it's dock.
What was used, what was, when Molet owned it, was it being used at that point in time?
No, as the building inspector suggested.
Doesn't have occupied permit, correct? No occupied?
No, no, said, but occupancy.
No, no occupied.
So when you go into the building, is it built as a two-family or a single family?
It's framed, like a, it's, right now, it's framed like the two apartments upstairs.
And what about downstairs?
With just a concrete garage area.
Downstairs?
Yeah. So I thought it would be perfect space.
Yeah. It sounds like it would be.
No, we're not saying that. It's just that you're not asking for, you know, you're asking for something, but you didn't put it in the paperwork.
We wanted to move forward with, you know, naturally with the town's...
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, we have to do the right thing here and have it, have it done correctly. Our lawyer needs to look at it in case there's something that we're missing out on here. I would question the commercial vehicle parking space. I mean, it just seems to me like it's jamming right against the boundary.
There's significant retaining walls on either side, which are about four or five feet. Sightwork's already been done, the drainage has been done.
Okay.
Significant parking with reengineering that I just, just paid for, again, the same piece of paper with a fresh stamp, that shows dumpster, fencing, significant parking, and existing lot that which is done. So...
So you got the okay to put the parking deck close to the plot lines or lines?
Well, basically, it's like retaining, it's a, it's a big retaining wall on either side. It already is fenced off. So I mean, you could, you can nose right up in there. My company vehicles are not, the employees take them home. So there's no vehicles, they're left, they come in my, in my vans, and then they take them home. Vans go with the guys. So I have example parking, and there should be plenty of room for you guys, so.
But I think, I think, as I said before, you didn't ask for the mixed use, so I don't know if you guys have an issue with that or not. Marshall?
Don't have to be.
Well, I think we need to give some direction...
Yes.
...to the applicant about if they're going to withdraw, what they have to ask for. So we're looking for an application that involves mixed use, that's in the zone highway commercial.
Correct.
Which probably doesn't change anything that you guys...
I don't think it does.
No. So it's, it's not that. But so mixed use, what else would they require to...
We just want to make sure everything that they're presenting here is correct for a mixed use.
Right.
The parking.
The parking.
There's a lot of question about the parking, I mean...
And the grandfathering, and that, you know, all of this is grandfathered. It's this undersized lot, the parking, I mean, the asphalt goes all the way...
It does go all the way, yeah.
Pretty much to the, you know, the whole place is covered. It's overcovered, which is grandfathered. They're not allowed any longer with the new bylaws to go within three feet of the property line, and that's grandfathered as well. There were a whole, whole bunch of things that are, because it's pre-existing.
That it's going to stay that way, right.
And, yeah.
But big shoes.
Bedrooms and the parking and the dumpster, and he's going to have to sprinkle it because it's mixed use. But it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with you guys.
Can you just explain a little bit more about the business that you're going to be operating out of the downstairs? Are you going to have an office?
Yeah, I'd like to have a front end, so I can answer the phones, some computers, I'd like to have my little desk there too, planning board that we...
How, how big is the office going to be?
I think it's roughly, it's just under six hundred square feet.
How many employees would be there?
Um, one, pretty much, two, including myself.
Two.
I mean, I'm in and out, I'm kind of on the field, I'm the owner operator, so I'm everywhere.
That's probably the key to parking, is it?
Right. I'm thinking about it.
I'm going to be there. It's the same thing, the company vehicles go with the guys so I can send them right to the jobs in the morning.
He's going to grow.
Try to get better.
How many, how many trucks do you have now?
Uh, four.
So are all four of those going to be?
No, not there. They would be in and out if, at best.
The end of the day with it?
And once on the end, some of the morning, but everybody goes home at night.
With the trucks?
With the trucks, that's it, yeah. So there's no other vehicles on the lot during the day, other than the two employees or whoever who's...
How about in the morning when you start out, are all four trucks going to be there loading up?
It's a potential that that could have, I mean, I'm not going to say no.
No, I'm glad you're not saying that.
Probably on payday, you're going to see them in too.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, but we made a significant investment here under the premise that we, you know, we hoped we could be able to operate like this. It's such a beautiful space, it's new, it's unfinished. I think it would be a real, two really nice apartments. We want to do them high efficiencies, set them up nice, and, you know, try to run the business there and use Route eighteen as, you know, some advertisement.
And the reality is, under the bylaws, he has a right to do that, to run that business there, and it's just a question of whether or not the accessory apartments would be allowed.
Right. Oh, yeah, I think definitely has a right to the business being there.
Some things I wasn't...
Yeah, well, it's highway commercial, definitely.
Yeah.
It's just been sitting there for four years. People have asked, well, what's that building, what's that building doing? It's, you know, it's, it's doing nothing. It's well-framed. It's, when Marshall comes in and looks at it, he's going to like what he sees. So that's, was our intention, if we have to reword it.
I think you've already signed off on the framing, number of aspects.
I may have done frame, I don't remember insulation.
The permit seems to indicate that a lot of...
I didn't want to do anything until I came here. I went to Marshall first, I went to law. And we want to move forward on it, we want to, you know, actually, one way or another, get going, because it's, right now, it's just custom. But, you know, paying mortgages on it, so.
So if you, if you look at it as Marshall was initially as a commercial building with a two accessory apartments, it looks like you need nine point nine parking spaces.
Depends on how you classify.
Well, that's what I mean. We looked at, it's a commercial building, you said five point six for the commercial end of it.
Although you think there's just two employees.
If you look at it, what was the other?
What's in there?
And there is a garage door on the back of the building, so I don't know how this board interprets garages as to whether or not they see them as an additional space.
It's all one, it's all one space. It's a small door on the back. It's just, it's just, which is good, because basically with my shop, she generally takes up a ton of the room. I need a place to put it at night, have it, you know, have dropped off, picked up, taken away. It's not as if plumbers can store more, electricians can store a little more. HVAC seems to take up a lot more space. So I need that more as storage than anything, a place where guys can come and hit and run it and go. And it just, it's, it's Route eighteen, although there's a lot of traffic there, it's, it's a pretty good location, it's a lot of local work I've been doing. I'm doing work in the developments right around the corner. I've done a lot of work in Abington and Whitman. My shop was previously up on Bedford Street in Whitman, just over the line, and I was leasing there, and we thought this would be a nice, a good move for us, so.
Excellent, yeah. And you're a small business, so the idea of apartments, that's another income that you can...
That would be ideal. It would definitely help.
I can definitely understand.
It's a nice space, and it just seems a waste.
Where do you want to go, Rich?
Well, I still have an issue with it being advertised as not a mixed use or, or a business going in there. That's the only issue I have, really, when it comes down to it. I want to ask more questions to the lawyer, make sure that we're not messing this up because it's, it, the application doesn't say anything about mixed use. All it's, and the advertisement, all it says is they're asking for special permit for, for the apartments, correct?
Yeah.
It has nothing to do, there's nothing there saying they're going to put a business in there. Now it's a mixed use.
Yeah, that's my mistake. When I filed that petition, I was understanding Mr. Davidson was already in there operating his business. That's why I filed it, as I did. And it was...
I mean, that's a mistake that could come back later on, haunt, haunt us, I think.
Listing all of the grandfathered issues?
Well, yes, I, I agree.
As a result of that, as the mixed use, how much of the area is storage, how much is office space, how much is workspace, how are they going to classify the space?
Well, it was grandfathered in as a residence.
With, with the, with the apartments, and how much square foot is that, and how many bedrooms there are, which he has listed. All of that presented to, in an application to the board, so the board can forward that to council and verify, because there's a lot of grandfathered issues.
Well, I just, if I may, just respectfully suggest that the plan that the board has before deals with all of that. It says specifically that fourteen hundred square feet of warehouse space, four hundred feet of office space, that's, that comes up to eighteen hundred.
Depending on how I frame it.
So, right. The first floor is seventeen hundred, that's what's proposed, is fourteen hundred plus three fifty, seventeen fifty. So that's, that's what Mr. Davidson comes before the board with tonight, and then he comes before the board additionally with a proposal for a one-bedroom apartment and a two-bedroom apartment. So it's all set forth here on this plan before you. That won't change when we come back a month, two months from now. That is what is proposed.
But it would be what you're asking for too. You didn't ask for the mixed use, you didn't ask for the commercial. You asked for the...
No, like I say, that was my mistake.
I know, but, but it's, it's, it's an issue. It's an issue.
Yeah, it's an issue you want to speak to council about. I respect that, yeah. And I'm, I'm, you know, more than willing to modify the petition. If we have to re-advertise it, we'll re-advertise it, but the advertisement probably won't change. He has a right to use the first floor.
Oh, I agree, but again, the thing...
And so the, the advertisement was for a special permit to a lot of the accessory apartments upstairs.
Yeah.
I think we've covered our bases, but it's not for me to say, it's for you to say, so.
And how's the board feel about it?
Well, I actually agree with the applicant that, you know, they are looking at putting a business in which they already are entitled to do, right? And it's just that they're looking for accessory apartments. And for that, that's why they came before the zoning board for a special permit. But I understand, you know, two issues. I, I think the lesser issue is the zoning district. Obviously, any decision we have to make would have to be the, you know, the new zoning district, which, to be honest anyway, is only relatively recent, but it doesn't change anything, does it? But the second thing is mixed use. So I, I'm afraid my ignorance is that I don't realize how important that is to specify that, because, I mean, I think he did in his, in his submission, he did talk about that he was putting accessory buildings. So, but, but he should have mixed use in that requirement.
Well, I think the permit was given for a duplex or something like that, wasn't it?
The construction permit.
Right. So he was building a duplex. And then...
It's changed.
Now he's asking for two accessory apartments, two duplex.
And there's nothing about commercial...
No.
Being done in there, so...
I had no idea.
I mean, if we, if we say okay to the apartments and he puts a business in there, is it not going to be an issue with the building and...
Well, you know, I don't know now, he's got, there was, he's built two duplexes to some extent, from as far as I know. But now it's changed apparently. It doesn't look like probably the plans that were given to him. I don't know, it's been so long since...
I just feel like there's a lot of questions that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Eddie?
When, when this was approved, did it come before the board at some point in time for any kind of variances?
I don't think it had to. I think he had a single family there, it was TC, and they had a structure going up at the back of it, and it was allowed. It was the existing, single family was pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
And the proposed addition was not increasing, it was conforming, ten-foot on the side yard and whatever that. So he was entitled to a permit, and I think he was going to make two units on it.
But the permit says it was going to be a duplex. So duplex, I generally think... But the permit says it was gonna be a duplex. So duplex, I generally think of as side-by-side, isn't it?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, but, I mean.
So here, there was original plans drawn by the engineer that showed one thing, and then there's also another footprint that shows the other. And the Georgia passed these along with me. I just had to have them reviewed with the, with the engineer that redid, made sure the parking spots, everything was in accordance with the new zoning, so. I do have some drawings.
So when he, when he framed this out, he didn't frame it out as a duplex? Is that what, is that what I'm hearing, or is that?
I think he, I would've thought he probably did, based on, but I don't know.
He, it, it seemed like he started, but the way he has the bedroom set up, there's no bathrooms, you know what I mean? So there's no plumbing in the structure right now, so.
So he didn't frame it.
So he didn't complete any framing. He actually brought me in there to give him a price on heating, but I looked at the building, I said, what are you doing?
What is it?
What are you, what are you, what are you doing?
Yeah, apparently he changed midstream, I guess, I don't know. And I do remember George Michaels, I think works for him, and he would say, that wanted, he would have the right to have three. Then he had somebody who wanted a duplex, and then, then he had, and so they were gonna maybe change something, and then they kinda lost interest in stuff. I don't know, whether putting in fences or whatever.
He was working on all the projects.
And, and, right, and then he just let the permit expire, and now.
That's why I came to you and said, what do you think?
I, I don't know. So, now you're starting, well, you have, because it's now zoned HC, it's non-conforming in, but pre-existing in many different ways. So, yeah, it's a confusing property. George, George Valetta's really.
I can make it.
But, yeah, we'll get, we have to take care of it. I need to have specifically where you're gonna go and why. Your council tells you why it's okay, et cetera. I'm gonna run it by council, and then.
It could work out just fine. I mean, but we, there's too many questions for us to vote on it tonight.
Well, I agree there.
Well, you can either withdraw without prejudice, or they can vote it down, or whatever, you're gonna vote.
You don't want us to vote it down.
I know, I don't think you should.
Oh, is there a third option? Could you continue it based upon information?
But I think we may have to have, re-advertise, correct?
That's another possibility. You could agree to continue mutually, sign it up, and he can provide.
He can provide additional information.
Yeah, I think what I'd like to ask the board to consider, if you would, is to continue it, and then if council says that we need to re-advertise it, which I'm not sure that we do.
Yeah, okay.
No, everybody knows that you don't need to. You agree to continue, you write it up.
Right.
And then.
And then we can have council look at the project, and you're asking for a mixed-use here, so we need to use those words, a mixed-use, and, and get her input on it. If anything, if everything is grandfathered in, that'll be okay.
All that is gotta be listed in there, how it happened, et cetera. A package's gotta be put together, and I'll forward it off to council.
Yeah.
I mean, that way everything's coming.
You forward it off to council.
Personally, I'd like to see a little more exploration on the parking, only because I think four spaces, I'm not sure that's gonna be sufficient.
For the business, you mean?
Well, you're gonna have a total of four and then one, right, for the truck?
Uh, no, it'll be seven plus one.
It's actually being spaced.
Oh, I didn't see the ones that, there's some up front here.
Yeah.
That's, that's okay, too, right?
And actually, a fire truck can roll right on through, right here. There's an easement.
That's gonna be tough for a fire truck, I believe it. What are you meaning on that one?
Well, I knew, when, you know, there was a lot of pavement there.
Yeah, you may have to, you may have to show this to the fire department, too, because they may have an issue with, with, with that commercial being parked there, that vehicle, because it may be a difficult situation for them to get in there.
There's no obstruction at all of that. It's, it's.
I mean, I did see it. It's a, I did see.
It's like a two, two.
Yeah, I did see that, but we may wanna bring those over to the fire department, just to make sure he's happy with that, to achieve. Too many questions. That's what it is. It's too many questions. So you have your options. Yeah, we could vote on it, and that probably wouldn't go too good.
No, I prefer that, as I say, to continue it, and hear back from town council as to what, what they would like, that's what you would like to see us do.
Okay.
I have another question, and I, I don't know if Mr. Davidson wants to entertain this, but it isn't allowed use under G4 of 17521 for him to operate his business out of there. So in the interim, would this board be offended if he ran his business out of there?
Because it's a lot, I, I don't think that's something that we should even touch.
He's allowed to by right. He's gonna register and be using it as a storage facility. He'd have to.
For fiber protection.
He'd have to, it doesn't have an occupancy permit yet.
No, he'll have to get that.
He'd have to bring it up to code. I don't know whether he's gonna heat it. Probably you will.
He can have an office, I would imagine, so.
You know somebody good.
I gotta get, I wanna put bathrooms in, you know what I mean? So I gotta go forward.
Yeah, you'd have to get an occupancy permit to.
Do all that.
To put that, the shop together, and then.
Construction needs to be completed.
Then you're allowed to operate out of there by right.
Yep.
You don't need approval from this board. Mixed uses and a special permit for the apartments is another thing.
Well, you just need to get everything aligned correctly and.
Yeah.
Because there's an awful lot of grandfathered issues here.
Right, and we wanna make sure everything's correct and.
So you're gonna continue this, agree to continue?
It's what council wants to do.
If the board would be willing.
Okay, board?
Yes.
Nancy, you have those continuation agreement forms?
So, yeah.
I think we should, yeah.
So. On the issue of, um, petition of Bruce Davidson, trustee 166 Bedford Street, Room to Trust, 312 East Washington Street, Hanson, for special permit request pursuant to 17521A, 1A, or 166 Bedford Street, and make a motion to continue this here.
To.
So council.
No, no, but to our next meeting date?
Yeah, which is November 8.
I wonder if I may ask, because I'm gonna be out of town November 8, and it may take us longer to iron out these issues with town council and so forth, so could we? I know you don't wanna hear this.
I don't wanna hear that. I'm sorry.
No, he was going out of town.
Well, it would be practical, though, to give us, give you a bit more time to be.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's gonna give us plenty of.
December 13?
December 13.
That gives us time, too. Everything's good on the time on that. Not going over anything, right?
No, we'll have them sign it.
Okay, all right. All right, so we made the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thanks. I hope it works out for you. I mean, it's just too many questions, though.
Is that an extension?
Certainly, yeah. Yeah. Thank you all.
All right, good luck with everything on the business.
Appreciate it. Marshall, I'll keep in the talking for this week.
Do you wanna go get a wanderer?
Yeah.
I'll get him.
That was probably my mistake, right there.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, so where, we, yeah, we got Bedford there.
It being after 7:10, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Kevin and Jessica Kephus. Close enough, 130 Cynthia Road, Abington, for a variance under 17547 Section C, for a 30-foot wide driveway for existing three-car garage at 130 Cynthia Road.
How you doing?
Very well.
Uh, no bearing on the sore. Uh, it's gonna be Bill and Vanessa.
You have a call, sir?
All right, my name's Ron Parkinson. I'm actually Jessica's father and, and my wife Linda, and we are the folks who rent the in-law. Not, we don't rent the in-law. We have, we built the in-law apartment next to my daughter's house, providing part of my daughter's house. And the driveway was installed. We have a three-car garage, and there's a section that's carved out of the driveway that has become a menace. It's also been hazardous. It's caused some frustrations with people trying to get into the driveway and in and out of the driveway. I brought some photos. I don't know if that helps, so you can kinda take a look at what I'm.
I think we got them.
Want a better color?
Color may not hurt.
Yeah.
Well, I printed them out anyway, so you can have them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, situation is just, it's caused a hazard where, if you, if you, look at this. The driveway slopes up. My daughter Jess smashed her car. There was a big rock in that with a red stake is that you can see. Couldn't see that. She backs over the berm, put a big dent in the car. When there's two cars parked in the middle, in front of the middle garage, it's difficult trying to navigate around that berm and get out onto the street down, down to the side here. It's just, uh, very, very difficult and annoying, and what happened was there was a second accident, because there were two cars parked there. My guest tried to back out, avoiding this thing, and ended up hitting the rear quarter of the car that was parked behind him, so that's that. The thing that really kind of brought this to a head was my mother-in-law, who lived two miles away. Visit us often, visit Linda, those are their grandkids, and they come, come here. My grandfather, my, my father-in-law is 91 years old. He's on a cane. Very difficult for him to walk. My mother-in-law is 86. She's on oxygen and on a walker. So it's important for them to get up close to the doorway to eliminate as much walking as possible. My car door is open there. You can, that's, can't see it, but that's where the entryway is to our, to our particular unit. So what's happened is my father-in-law, who was a bit of a short fuse guy at 91, 91, gets fed up trying to maneuver around this particular curved-out, carved-out area that parks on the street, which means, and we're happy to do it, but Linda and I go down, helping my mother-in-law out up the driveway. My father-in-law, who refuses to get help at all, okay? And it's, it's sad to, it's really sad. It's, it's a safety issue. I hate to think what's gonna happen there in the winter. He's already fallen and broken his hip at his own house a couple of years ago, so. I just need some help, some relief, so I can kinda run, widen this driveway to 30 feet. You can see from the second photo, so we can drive straight down. My father-in-law and they can drive straight up to the entrance to our house, eliminating walking. And it doesn't impact the aesthetics of the neighborhood at all.
So the, the entry of the driveway is currently 20 feet?
Yes, the tarred, the tarred area is 20 feet, yes.
And the curb cut I see in this photo, you have, um.
That's, that's actually the 30-foot mark.
Okay. So you're not even removing any granite or whatever that material is made of?
This is all new construction, so.
Okay.
So, so you left that out there for what reason?
Left what out there?
The cut.
I didn't, that's, that was the contractor. It's all new.
Contracted?
Yeah. I wasn't even, wasn't even paying attention until it came time for me to kinda, all of us, to use the driveway and go, this is a pain in the neck, you know?
I mean, this is, this is a variance, correct, you're coming from a variance. And variance is very difficult to, to, I mean, we have to find a hardship. I mean, so, so it's a new house, and the in-law was already, is on there now. It was on there when it was built.
No, the whole thing was built new.
So every, okay, so the whole project, the whole project was built, and then you put the driveway in. So you have three garage doors. It was originally designed that way. There was no addition to the house?
No, it was all designed, this is all Century Estates. We were in here petitioning.
Yeah, you were in here not long ago, asking for permission to do the.
Third.
The, the in-law.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So, I mean, as you say, Rich, you know, the, the three prongs to the variance, you know, what is the hardship? Is it financial, shape, topography, soil conditions? Second, we have to determine, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? And, you know, we need to address, and, let's see, and then, with literal enforcement of a cause hardship. And I think those are the, um, the things we need to determine as a board in order to grant the variance. A higher threshold than the special permit was for, for that. I think, you know, the shape of the driveway is one of those, uh, topographical hardships, if, you know.
But it's created by building three garage doors.
Right. But that doesn't necessarily negate the hardship. I mean, the, for whatever reason, the driveway was engineered that way.
It's kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, having, having a cutout.
But I think it had to be engineered that way.
It had to be, yeah.
The zoning requires that it be only 20 feet wide.
Exactly.
Yes, they don't want airport landing strips for driveways.
Right.
Um, they designed it that way. Now, I don't understand why the builder didn't pull this driveway further down here and put a pad out here, so these.
That would go right in front of our front door.
Oh, that's the reason. I don't see, I don't see the hole.
Yeah.
I don't understand why you can come further down.
Tapered it like a V or something.
I know, it's, it's very inconvenient.
And why he cut it back. He could've come further down here and done this.
Seems like the builder just did it to comply without necessarily.
Well, I don't think, uh, it's diff, it's made it difficult. The apron at 20 feet doesn't mean the driveway couldn't have come, a lot more driveway couldn't have come way down and then just had some grass strip down here. This could've come way, way further down here and then come over here. Would allow him far more parking over here.
To give a perspective, this is only, this is about 10 by 10, so it's 100 square feet, but.
Again, we worry about handing out variances. I mean, this was a house designed with three, it was designed with three garages. And by the bylaw, it says you can only have a driveway, so, so what? It is a strange, strange booking.
Frankly, I don't want my in-laws to be parking at the end of the street and having to slip them up, you know? It's, it's, it's dangerous. It's a safety issue.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Do you, you know, it's 10 square feet? That's what this grass area is or dirty area?
10 feet down and 10 feet across, so.
So 10 by 10?
10 by 10. Not very big, but boys in a mess.
How do you deter, I don't know if you know this, Marshall, how do you determine what's the driveway and what's not the driveway in this particular?
The, it's, the only thing the bylaw speaks to, I believe, is the curb cut, 20 feet. The rest of it is driveway.
So as you said, you could taper it.
Yeah. Well, I know, the curb, the curb cut, you know, he could be, he could be, this is 30, and somewhere right over here is, is the 20.
Yeah, right.
Could this be done? Yeah. So they pull in, and they've got a parking space here, you know? He says there's a front door, it's here, so that doesn't work for him, but that doesn't mean.
So you bring, you bring the asphalt down closer to the road.
Yeah, but don't, don't test the curb cut.
Or, you know, you grant him a five-foot, whatever, you know, I don't know. I kind of agree with Rich as far as the variance goes. It still has to, it still has to.
It's, it's, you know.
Be in conformance with what the statute says.
And I looked, the confidence do not speak to the limiting the 20 feet. So you wouldn't be infringing upon, well, everybody else. be infringing upon, well, everybody else in the neighborhood says we can only have twenty and now suddenly we have this, so then it wouldn't affect, because the covenants don't speak to it strictly the by, the bylaws.
The bylaws, yeah.
And they write that in there because they don't like landing strips.
I, I promise I won't be bringing my plane in there at all.
But you can understand what we're talking about, I mean...
I, I do, but, you know, it's, you know, we, we, a house designed, we didn't know what the, it's a twenty-foot, how it was going to look, it's a three-car garage, part of the design of the house, we bought it in good faith and such, and then we end up with this, it's, and it's, you know, I can certainly live with a cutout, but this is ridiculous, you know, it just, and then when I'm watching people trying to back in and out, backing over the berm and backing over the grass.
Yeah.
If nothing, it looks like hell, I mean, it's going to look like hell in the spring when people keep on backing over the grass and over the berm and damaging their car.
What, what about what they were talking about, that you bring the asphalt down towards the curb, but not touching the curb, giving yourself more room, what about doing that? What about putting, bringing the asphalt down to...
Can you show him? Can you show him what you're suggesting?
Towards the curb.
But, so...
This is what I haven't been there, but this is what he's talking about. Take this, you've got the asphalt here and you bring it down and do this, and then wherever it comes out to the curb, and then this whole thing comes asphalt, nobody's backing over it, but you're, this is all asphalt, but the curb will be covered still to where the edge of your driveway is now, but you've got a heck of a lot more area to park, you're telling me your front door is over here somewhere, right?
That's right here.
So you, you're not going to do this, but there's all, going to be all space down here to put cars, you've got a car here, you have a car here, you have a car here...
So as long as it meets the other end of that driveway?
Where the apron opens at twenty feet, that's what the bylaw says.
And you're, then you're maintaining the twenty-foot driveway?
As opposed to, because you created your own hardship, you, per se, haven't, I mean, but it is what happened, you know, it's going to be three-car and you built it brand-new, and I don't like it. Well, that's not what they consider, I, it is a hardship, but it's not, I understand where you're coming from, I understand where they're coming from, I'm just trying to find something where, is it possible to think about doing something like that, discuss it with your builder, do something like that, if this has to be built up, there should be no boulders or anything else in here, you should be able to run around your bare feet, you know, if it's going to be grass, but to damage it, but...
So you still got to pull in over here and then...
You still got to pull in that twenty-foot apron area, but then it goes way in, up onto the left, another ten feet in, and that's what they're suggesting, that way they don't have to bend to give a variance and you will still be able to have, nobody getting hurt or damaged, and it meets the bylaws, that's what they're proposing.
I don't know if they are proposing it, they just suggested it.
Well, yeah, that's what was suggested.
Bill, what, what, you haven't really heard much of me about it.
I'm not voting on this one.
I mean, you know...
I can, I can see the hardship, I can also see that the hardship is, is, it's created, I'm not saying self-created, but it's...
Unforeseen.
Yeah, it's a, it's a new unforeseen hardship to this property, it's not like you bought into the property or, you know, kind of, you know, whoever designed the driveway or poured the asphalt or however you laid the asphalt, you know, I don't think did the most, the best way of doing it.
No way, no way, not at all.
Right. But given that, you know, we are reluctant to do that and this is a new neighborhood, you know, and people who, how many have three-car garages in that neighborhood, you know, is this going to open the floodgates, that's something we have to address?
Well, I don't think so, because the other people who have a three-car garage, they're building across the street from it now, they go in and they can turn into their garage. I'm driving straight up.
Right.
Straight up the hill, so it's a little, it's a different circumstance in terms of the, the way this is configured. This definitely can't, this configuration just can't work, it just...
Right.
It, it might also be that we're doing the bylaws that don't recognize the size of houses that are being built.
I know, you got a good point there.
That's a very good point.
Very good point.
Issue behind all this.
I mean, so, there should be something in there saying, if you've got a three-car garage, you should have a bigger driveway.
You need an airplane.
But with the bylaw the way it is now, it's just, it's, it's, it's difficult for us because we're trying to stick to the, the no variance, we got to find a real hardship.
On a better occasion.
It's a brand-new development, I mean, it was designed that way, but I can understand what you're saying, though, I definitely can, what did you think of what Marshall said?
It's, well, I thank you for that, but it's, it's...
We would really, you know, I know, we would really like...
I still have a, I'm, I'm thinking of my father-in-law, it's, it's just, you're going to see it, so...
I mean, the fix that was being suggested is presumably what you were going to do anyway, you were going to put tarmac on down to the rest. It's just that, suggestion is that you don't go all the way to the road, and the reason for that is, is because we've set of laws, set of the neighborhoods, also for safety, but the neighborhoods look a certain way, right, but it's actually safety is usually important.
That's what the town voted on.
Yeah, it's, and you can see the towns who changed, so we had gentlemen before you and they were, they were proposing something in one district, and it turned out that the town had changed the district, and so the towns could easily, town could easily change, more of these buildings are going to be built and they may change the bylaws, but for the moment, the laws are pretty black and white, and the hardship, you know, here it would be topography, I think, like Mr. Nolan said, but it's really caused by your building, it's not caused by the actual art.
Let me ask you this, if it was nailed and cut in stone, then nothing would change because it's a bylaw, why would you let me fill out an application, spend close to four hundred dollars, if you knew right at the outset you weren't going to change, you weren't going to give me some relief here? Why would you do that? We all work hard for money, just seems like a little bit of a...
You think you're entitled to the variance?
No, I don't, but I, I think in certain circumstances, there's got to be some flexibility. You've said yourself, houses are being built larger these days, there's three-car garages, aesthetically, this looks stupid, it, it's, it doesn't work in terms of moving a car in and out, you get an elderly person, just as I described, you know, they want to get close to the front door, they're having a tough time getting up there, we've got a big family. My other daughter lives in the other corner, I mean, we're all, we're all close, there's a lot of cars, you know, in everybody's houses here. So I go back to my original question, if you weren't going to change, why would you let me fill out an application and pay that money? Do I have a point?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that's fair, because we need to hear, you know, what the, you know, what the hardship is, we need to hear the thing. Variances do get granted, they're, you know, but as, as Tom Council says, they are supposed to be rare.
It's my parents that's the hardship.
No, I get, I mean, I...
We, we get it.
I'm one of three votes. I, I could be swayed that, that you have demonstrated a hardship, but I'm one of three votes, and you need three votes, you know, I see...
Do the other three gentlemen have elderly parents at all that can relate to what I'm saying?
It makes it that much worse, those sorts of things, but that's just me.
I understand, I appreciate that, and I appreciate, you know, your time here, but...
You don't just get a variance because you file with the zoning board.
I'm not even suggesting...
And we've told you there are reasons for them, and we've tried to reach a reason, but I think you've also began a fix which seems to be very close to what you would do, that you would put asphalt down to the road, but, you know, you stop at the road, that you, you don't make your, the entrance of your driveway any bigger, and that's, that's the rule, that's, that's the, and I don't, I don't, I myself would vote if we had to vote, if you didn't withdraw and we had to vote for it, I would vote against it because I don't see the hardship, there's definitely a hardship, but I think that it might have been created, and I can't see the hardship that would be granted in a variance. In this meeting tonight, you've seen a few people come and not everybody has walked away with what they've asked for, one gentleman wanted a special permit, which is much easier to get than a variance, and they still didn't get it, so, I mean, we're entrusted by the people of the town to follow the laws, but it is a great hardship to change them, I think you've been given a fix here, that's, you know, not, it's not very different to what you were going to do, but that's what I would think.
Okay, so, open up to the floor. Anybody? Nope, there's no one here, so, all right, back to the board. Are we going to vote on this, or...
So I think if you want...
Maybe we should tell them though, what happened. So, so there's a choice, the, the zoning board can vote, right, that means you cannot come before the zoning board for another four years on the particular, two, two years, two years on this particular project, on another project you can, but not on this particular project, or you can withdraw and come back at another time.
And also you can appeal it.
That's true, that's true, we can vote against it and you can appeal it to the district court.
Superior.
Superior court, Superior court. And we send our file out to the judge in Superior court.
A lot of money spent over a hundred square feet. I guess we withdraw, huh?
Well, they can vote.
We, we can vote if you want something to, well, I don't know how we're going to vote, but, but I've actually said what I think.
I know.
But, so, but, but if we deny, if you have a decision that you could...
You can't bring it for us again for another two years.
Just, and just so you know, the three members who vote to grant the variance, it has to be unanimous. These three folks are going to vote. But it has to be unanimous in order for you to...
Yeah, all three of us.
It's not, it's not a three to two, it's not by majority, it's by every, it's unanimous.
And I can promise you this, that, you know, we understand, but our decisions have to be made because we're here on the board, we're not here to just, you know, pass it. There, there are bylaws and as a way of, the variances should be tougher than anything else, and that's how it is here, so...
Marshall, can I ask, there's nothing, whatever happens tonight, there's nothing that stops them from tarmacading the rest of their lawn here, right?
The, there is a percentage of, that they're only allowed to cover of the frontage, but this does not appear to, is going to be infringing upon them.
Right, because it looks like they're deliberately...
Right, they're deliberately doing that, they would be, assuming they were going to do that to afford more parking so their folks can get closer to the house and not be in the street, and have more maneuverability. I'd have to look it up to see exactly what portion of the coverage it would be, but I, you know, they have one-ten or one-twenty for frontage anyway, and we're only talking about thirty feet, so we're not going to be within that problem, and they're not going to be coming more than ten feet over, they're coming ten feet down. Problem is, the town voted on the look of wide aprons, that's what it is.
So how far off the curb and can I bring this, the bottom of the driveway?
Right, right to your property line, how far down that, that is, and typically, I don't know your, I can't, your lot, typical, we'd have from the curb, three-foot grass strip, three-foot sidewalk, and three or four feet would be for utility, curb stop for water, gas, sewer cleanup, that kind of stuff would be put in there, so all time ten feet from the curb. Probably your property line.
Ten feet from the curb?
Maybe, yeah, might, maybe less, I don't know, there's a sidewalk on that side.
There's going to be.
And there's going to be grass strip on that side.
And trees.
And trees, so your property line is probably too much further from, excuse me, where that...
So I can't bring that, I can bring it down to maybe the...
I'm guessing, but I mean, I have to look at your plot plan, you can go to my office tomorrow, we'll have, what's the name of the street?
This is basically, this is Murphy Road, I'm on the corner of Murphy and...
Monroe through Zulu is in New Hampshire, we'd have to request it, what's the builder's name?
Jack Ridden.
Yeah, Ridden, and, guy on site isn't Ridden, it's Hurley. They'll have a copy of your plot plan, and he can tell you where, I mean, I have a copy of it, but it's in New Hampshire being scanned, it'll take me a couple, three days to get it, but we can find out exactly how far you are up the street, we've got a certified plot plan of your lot, everyone has one, so we'll tell you exactly how far it is on.
And that's how far down I can go?
Yeah, otherwise you'd be paving the town's property, and they don't appreciate that.
All right, so I guess we withdraw, I don't want to have a vote, and I know where you're going, so, it's very clear.
So you are going to allow, withdraw without prejudice is what you're saying?
Yep.
Withdraw without prejudice, and you guys...
Do a motion to that effect.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, so I, I, on the petition of Gavin and Jessica Kapust, 130 Cynthia Road, Abington, for variance under 175, 47, section C, for a thirty-foot wide driveway for existing three-car garage, 130 Cynthia Road, I motion that the petition would be allowed to withdraw.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Favor?
Without prejudice means whatever, you can vote back.
Take care.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Okay, let's go on, so, we have anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe we have approval of the minutes and whatnot, but...
On approval of minutes, we're going to wait on that.
Wait on?
Yeah, because the member's not here.
And discussion on...
Filing instructions, which I think I...
Oh, we should talk about it and get this going.
Especially in light of what happened tonight.
Go right ahead, go right ahead.
In light of what happened, I think, at the last meeting, when people come in here, and I think as Dennis said, I think a lot of people expect I'm entitled to a variance, and that's not the case, I think if we develop some instructions and an outline as to this is what a variance is, this is what you have to satisfy in order to come, you're going to screen out a lot of this stuff. These, these people probably would never come in front of us tonight, and, and as I said...
That's a good point, it is.
So I, I, as I said, I think a couple meetings ago, Rich, I'd like to do that, and I'd like to also look into the board adopting rules and regulations governing our proceedings, which we're supposed to do under our bylaw and under the state law as well, the state statute. So I would make a motion to direct the chairman to appoint a subcommittee of two, consisting of one full member, one associate member, to review our filing instructions and to develop proposed rules and regulations for the board to govern our procedures, and to report back, I'd say in two months, I think two months would be plenty of time to, because there's a lot, there's a lot of these out there that you can kind of...
I kind of like to also put in that, 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 and I think that Marshall should be able to look through this.
Yes.
And also, maybe a town lawyer, I mean...
Absolutely, I agree, yeah.
You know, we just really think that it's a great idea, I mean, like you said, that's a possibility, that we probably wouldn't even have a few people in front of us, I personally think it's a good idea, I think it's time to do it, but again, Marshall and...
Yeah, I amend my motion.
...should be able to look at before we adopt anything.
Include consulting with the...
This is not part of my job.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, just...
Just to review.
We don't want to make, we don't, what I'm saying, Marshall, is we don't want to make a burden for you with something that we, you know, if we try to adopt something.
So to include consultation with the building commissioner and town council?
Yes, please.
Yeah, that would be my...
No, Shagan said no.
That would be, well, if he doesn't want to consult, that's up to him.
No, we are not blessing, and that is not my job.
Right, because you don't care how... Right, 'cause you don't care how people file, you only care about if the rules are being followed.
I shouldn't, as far as I'm concerned, I shouldn't even be doing this, they, I could, they could be appealing my decision, and I'm here advising the board, I shouldn't be doing that either, my job is to approve or deny building permits and to issue or refuse to issue a zoning violation, everything I do is supposed to be, is appealable to the zoning board of appeals or to the Boston Board of Regulations and Standards. Advising this board, I don't, I think is a conflict of interest, but unfortunately, Boston's not feel that way, nor do you guys, and I want you to stop feeling that. And I don't wanna come here anymore and go through all these things, oh my God.
They're recorded.
Andy, and you put me in the stock.
They're being recorded.
It's probably a good point, there's time to say thank you, though, for being here.
I don't have any choice, you don't have to thank me.
Okay, so we have a motion, let's, let's hear the whole motion.
Did you get that, Nancy? Motion, motion to direct the chairman to appoint a subcommittee consisting of a full member and an associate member to review the filing instructions of the board and to develop proposed rules and regulate, regulations for the board to govern their procedures, which is, and to include consultation with the building commissioner and the town council to the extent that they wanna be involved, how's that?
That seemed better. Anyone wanna second it?
Second, I'll second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Bill?
I'm in.
It's up to you if you wanna be it.
I don't mind.
You don't mind?
Well, I'm, I'm lying a little bit, but...
Okay, and, uh, Andy?
I'll do it if you...
All right.
It was your idea, you're not snaking out.
Well, that's, I put the idea out there, somebody else can pick it up. Again, Bill, I don't think it's gonna be difficult, 'cause if you go to a lot of the town, of the town websites, there's, there's rules and regulations, that, that was pirated from a couple of places, too.
Yeah, I read through this, I saw a lot of similarities, a lot of...
Yeah, exactly, so it's not gonna take a lot of...
And there's a lot of crap that doesn't need to be there.
And, you know, you've been chair, how many years have you been chair of the board? So, so I think, you know, it's ideal.
And then we'll report back and, uh...
Yeah, it sounds great, and, and we'll figure something out and, uh, we'll push forward on it. Everyone happy with that?
Define happy?
Well, not, not everyone, not everyone.
Marshall, are you happy?
I was waiting, all right, wait a minute, we'll still be recording, Marshall, hold off on that. All right, so, anything else?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let me turn that off.
Andy, you should probably, like, exchange phone numbers, sort of general contact information.
Yeah, give me your, uh, I'm much better with email than phones, Bill.
Yeah.